Thanks, everybody. We are back from executive session. And we will now continue with the regular order of the agenda, which is awards and recognitions. Ms. Kirby.
All right. Good evening and welcome. Tonight, I'd like to recognize Dr. Xu Hu Lin, Heights High School's Mandarin Chinese Language and Business Teacher, for receiving the 2025 Ohio Master Teacher of the Year Award from the Martha Holding Jennings Foundation. The award is presented to one exceptional classroom teacher, who was nominated by their superintendent and has three years of experience as an Ohio teacher. It also includes a $7,500 award to be used for a project to benefit students in the recognized teachers' classroom, school, and/or district. And I just want to say, Dr. Lin personally has great enthusiasm, passion, and commitment to her students, to her colleagues, to the community. She is innovative. She is energetic and really seeks to change the lives of her students. I do not know where you get the energy from, Dr. Lin, and do the work that you do, but we are very lucky to have you as an educator in our district and at the high school. So please come up to receive your certificate and to take a photo with Dr. Lin.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Lin.
And as school just resumed, we do have a shorter awards and recognitions tonight. We will resume the Tiger Team members of the month during our October meeting.
And cadre reports as well?
Oh, cadre reports as well, yes. Thank you. First cadre meeting is coming up.
That's my favorite part of the meeting. That's why I come.
Yes. So that concludes our awards and recognition.
Thank you. Next, we have statements from the audience. Chauncey Hutton, will you please come to the podium? Introduce yourself.
Hello and good evening. My name is Chauncey Hutton. I am currently running for mayor of University Heights, but more importantly, I am the proud parent of a Heights High graduate from 2025. Unfortunately, they just came back from school with a little bit of the freshman funk. I managed to pick some of that up, hence the mask, and hence why I'll be leaving a little bit early so I don't infect any of these nice people.
Thank you.
I just want to take a moment to thank all of you for all of your hard work, for your dedication that you have put into serving the needs of our children, our most vulnerable members of our society. I myself am a public school graduate, my wife as well is a public school graduate. We have both lived through the burdens of having programs cut out from underneath us as children, and we appreciate the hard work that goes into keeping those programs alive and well. I will tell you now that if I am elected mayor, you will have my full support from that seat, but I'm also going to tell you that even if I am not elected mayor, you will continue to have my full support. I appreciate your work greatly, and I won't take up too much more of your time because I do need to go home and get some sleep. Thank you all very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hutton. Kathy Howard-Primes, would you come and introduce yourself, please?
Well, good evening. Again, my name is Kathy Howard-Primes, and I am a candidate for the Cleveland Heights University High School Board. And I just also wanted to say just thank you for all that you do for our students, our community, as well as our parents. I think you're doing a great job and off to a great start this school year, and thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for running.
And Tom Hudjkus-Lilly, if you would come up, please.
I am Tom Hudjkus-Lilly. I am also a school board candidate, and I have four kids in the district, and I am an alumnus myself. I want to thank especially Jody and Malia, who are rotating off. Thank you for all of your time. I know it's a lot. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. And now I will entertain a motion to consider the consent agenda.
I motion we consider the consent agenda.
I second.
Okay, we got to talk about a culinary arts field trip to Italy.
Now, how do we get to horn in on this trip?
Sure, they need chaperones, right?
They need more chaperones. They can't possibly have enough chaperones.
It just seems like the cultural immersion experiences that our students are able to have get better and better and better each year.
No kidding.
So I was also excited that that's an experience that our culinary arts students will be able to have. I think, or I could be wrong, students in CTE programming normally don't have the opportunity to participate in such fantastic experiences. So I'm glad to see we are able to offer that.
I was pretty excited about that. I was also excited that when I looked on the new appointments, we have a high school, or a former alum of our high school who's going to be hired, and I love it when we hire our own students. I think that's great.
Yeah, I was thrilled to see also that the Italy trip is over spring break, so it won't interfere with the kids' class days. And I was thinking, what a resume piece. How many kids at age of 18, when they're leaving high school, have taken cooking lessons in Italy? That's fantastic.
Ms. Kirby, do you know whether the spring breaks line up for the districts in the consortium this year?
With the exception of Maple. So three of the four line up.
Okay, because I know that's, we're constantly trying to make things easier and line up, so.
This is an expensive trip, and it also struck me that it would be great if we had a scholarship granting organization up and running in this district.
Yeah. The number of spots for that trip, I think it was 25?
Twenty-five, yeah.
I'm assuming that's spread, that's not Heights students specifically who are participating in CTE. That's the entire program, yeah.
It's the program across four districts.
Yeah, I just want to call that out because as the form looks in board docs.
Looks like it's just us.
Yeah, exactly. So that is spread across.
And I don't know how many kids are from Heights and how many kids are from Garfield or, I mean.
I'm sure that got submitted to every one of the consortium's boards to have to approve, so.
Yeah, I saw some other letters to some other superintendents, but if anyone's just looking at the cover page. Also, yeah, some great new appointments. Love seeing Jeff Porter's name on stuff. He's awesome.
Right.
And some nice donations. Couple of nice donations, which we greatly appreciate.
Is that OHSAA donation typical? Do we get that every year?
I think that the amount changes.
Yeah, but I remember seeing it last year.
I think that they like to, I don't know if they go to zero at the end of every year or not, but we do routinely get, and we also get a check from OHSAA very often for postseason play at our facilities, because we've got such great facilities. Even this year, in the last year of the life expectancy of the turf at Heights High before we do a big relaying of turf, it's still a great field. My Chardon students who played there, darn them, on Friday.
Oops.
They just got, so in Chardon, there's a brand-new field, and they thought that ours was newer than 10 years, so.
So it's been well-maintained.
It absolutely has.
I will say, I do appreciate the OHSAA's donor letter. They say that they hope their donation, among other things, can assist with, they list things off, but the last thing is adult fan behavior as well. So always a good reminder that, you know, we're cheering on kids.
Honestly, you know, I go to a lot, we all do, go to a lot of, I love football games. I love men's and women's basketball games. I've been known to hang out at baseball games.
Just a bit.
Just a bit. And I have, I don't think I've ever seen, that I can think of, fan misbehavior by Tiger Nation.
Agreed. I spent a lot of time at hockey games, and it wasn't the Heights families causing trouble.
Yeah.
So, okay, any other comments? Are we done? Ms. Latham.
Mr. Hanks?
Yes.
Ms. Willis?
Yes.
Ms. Ramey?
Yes.
Mr. Trundle?
Yes.
Mrs. Crenshaw?
Yes.
And now I'll turn it over to the superintendent.
All right. Thank you very much. So as we do every month, I do align the superintendent's update to the five goals of our strategic plan. And so I'll talk first just about the work that we're doing to advance student outcomes. As the school year starts, we do do quite a bit of professional development with our new staff in the roles in the district. So we have everything from the opening staff breakfast to day-long professional development led by members of the entire cabinet team to help teachers and other non-certified staff have a strong start to the school year. So we've had training around our social-emotional learning curriculum, around ZERN, for example, around our science pilot, around clarity, and around equity. And there are other initiatives as well. Data, making sure people know how to use our systems. So just lots of professional learning that happened to get us off to a strong start. So I want to thank the team. I see Bob Swiger, actually, everybody did some training here. Bob Swiger, Mike Jenkins, Carol Adell Anderson, Sam Gifford, Sean Patton, Nancy Pepler, Lisa Hunt. Kaythan, even Kaythan, I think, did some training on communication. So everyone has a piece, well, you did the complication. You did the ultimate training, the complication. But we all were engaged in just making sure that we had a strong start for our new staff members. So thank you all for that. Around college and career readiness, I did just want to update the board and the community around the different kinds of support that we have. These are all grant-funded positions to support our students as they pursue their post-secondary efforts. So Gear Up, for example, serves cohorts 2027 and 2028 in the high school. The ESC also has a Gear Up program that serves cohorts 2030 and 2031. And again, I want to reiterate, Bob Swager was instrumental in expanding this Gear Up opportunity, not only to our district, but also to schools in the ESC. Educational Talent Search provides support for the classes of 2026, 2029, and 2032. That is provided by College Now grant funds. And then we also have programming and supports coming out of Bob's office to support curriculum, career curriculum in particular, so that students are able to navigate school with an understanding of their future and the pathways that they're on. So this is really important programming for us. The beauty of it is it is grant-funded. We always pursue grant funds to support as much as possible because we want to, you know, really be as efficient as possible with our funds. And then there are grants out there that we always pursue.
Can I ask a question, Liz?
Sure.
I knew that we had the transition from like CHU-H Gear Up to the ESC version of it. I guess I didn't realize that it looks like we have like a year of gap, the 2029 year. Do we have plans for that, or this might be a Bob question?
2029, Bob, you could take the podium feel free, but I believe it's covered by Educational Talent Search. That's how we make sure that we address all the grade levels, but you can go ahead and speak to it.
This is what happens when you sit by the podium, Bob.
Good evening. Glad to address that question. So a lot of it is where the money is coming from serves different things. So the Cleveland Heights University Heights City School District has earned a Gear Up grant. The ESC Superintendent Kirby has earned a Gear Up grant to serve our students. And then College Now will also write grants and receive grants that then they're looking for school districts to partner with. So when you see something called Educational Talent Search, that really is part of the trio programs. And so College Now has earned that grant to service our students. It might not be students in the entire cohort like our Gear Up program, but they are constantly trying to get students and families to sign up and to participate in those programmings. And so that's specifically for the 2029 cohort.
Cool.
So when you piece it all together, then we have programming for every grade level, six through 12.
Right.
Cool. Thanks, Bob.
Thank you.
So then moving on to other student outcomes, we had the curriculum nights that we have every year at our elementary schools, middle schools, and high school last week. We also have started some early work in our MTSS meetings, really focused on supporting students who we have already identified as needing extra academic and SEL support. So even before the school year gets fully started, there were teams meeting with the high school team, high school counselors, high school social workers to identify the needs of students and ensure there's a plan for those students. They're really trying to be increasingly proactive in how we support students. And I was able to observe one, I was very impressed with how it was organized, the level of detail, and all the different supports that were being identified to help kids. Everything from connecting them to a particular extracurricular activity to a check-in, checkout with a particular adult. So those kinds of pieces were happening. And then under Families and Community Goal Three, we know was a very busy August. We had the Back to School Resource Fair on August 16th, where under Nancy Pepler and Lisa Hunt's leadership, we had 33 community partners, 600 attendees, and 30-plus volunteers, 450 backpacks distributed, and support from all the different departments in the district. So we had Chromebooks that were being distributed, bus tours. We had registration happening, sharing of attendance information, and then helping parents get connected with our annual update, which is important for infinite campus access. That event was actually just after, this is a very busy week, the kindergarten kickoff, where we had approximately 400 attendees of incoming, mostly kindergartners, there were some pre-K kids there. So school principals and teachers were there to talk about, to give a bit of an overview about kindergarten. So kindergartners were already starting to meet each other. I saw some kids, you know, reuniting after preschool and some hugs and excitement of seeing each other. But again, we had registration support. Information was shared about college and career readiness for our youngest learners. PTAs were there, Dolly Parton Imagination Library was there, and Reaching Heights as well. So we had dinner, raffle prizes, and a picture with the ever-popular TJ the Tiger.
Wish you'd have seen that.
Yeah. You missed that, didn't you?
Liz, I attended both of those events, and they were fantastic. And I just want to personally thank Nancy and Lisa for the work that they put into those because to see that kind of level of family engagement. I've been going to kindergarten kickoffs for a long time in this district, and that was the best-attended one I've ever seen. And the Resource Fair every year, I can't think how it can get better, and yet it does. So thank you.
Yeah, I'm going to chime in too, because I had so much fun at both of those events. The kindergarten kickoff, you know, is, was such a success this year because, A, it was far more efficient. To do it, to do all of the schools in one location, I mean, to me, it mattered a lot just in terms of releasing some of the burden from the people who work here. Because they were able to spend one night deeply immersed in this important work instead of so many nights. And I, you know, we all think a lot about just bandwidth when it comes to our staff, because people are taxed. But, I mean, I left that, and I think I was a foot off the ground. I, you know, it might have been that night I sent Liz an email. I'm like, this was fantastic. Here's some ideas for next year to make it fantastic-er. And then the back-to-school event at Delisle was, I mean, the weather was great. Tons of people, I mean, so many different resources available to folks. It was pure Cleveland Heights, University Heights, building a stage and showing ourselves off to ourself. It was fantastic. Just a great, great day.
Yeah, that, the Back to School Resource Fair is hands-down my favorite event in the district. So bravo to you ladies in the back. But then also, I mean, everyone else, though, that helped put it together, including Mark and the IT team, who were, you know, fixing Chromebooks on the fly and all the community partners that came out. I mean, it really is a cool event. And somehow, Delisle seems like the perfect place because you've got like multiple roads coming in, there's people coming from all, I mean, it was like people converging on that building. And so just a really cool event, and yeah, I hope to never miss one of those. I'd plan, you know, the best vacation in the world around being at that. That's so much fun.
And a special thank you to our Partner Anthem. For the amount of support that they provide us to that event is incredible.
Great.
Wonderful.
The next fun event, we'll go to, I think this is the last slide, but I do want to talk about Convocation. I spoke about the new hire meeting. So Convocation, this year, we did in partnership with the Heights Schools Foundation. It was connected to the 100-year anniversary of Heights High School at the Cedar Lee location. And the theme was decades. And so people across the district dressed in, they picked a decade to dress in and also showed their Tiger Nation pride as well. Ahmaud Krump from the Cavs, a Heights alum, was our emcee. He did an excellent job. We had a student DJ, a fifth grader from Fairfax, who, well, now he's going to be at Rocksmid, but he is, he was our resident DJ. We had cheerleaders. We had the Heights Quartet sing four excellent songs. We had a tribute to Tamara Gray, who is retiring, and she gave some words of wisdom to new staff coming into the district. We had, and at the end, you know, I did a speech, but at the end, we did a competition.
Truck taking. Was it truck taking?
Oh, no, who was the best dressed for the decade. And I will have to say, it was, there was some, it was some competition. Don't you think, Kaythan? Yeah, so options came in with the '90s. They were like, you know, Dr. Williams had on Adidas tracksuit. Like, they were really, you know, but the winner was noble, elementary. No favorites, isn't it? And I will have to say that, I mean, lots of spirit and energy. There were like fake radio, blow-up radios. The principal had a special, you know, tracksuit that he wore to represent the '80s, and then he changed back to his professional gear right after they won. But they were, hands down, they won, so they will get a special prize from superintendent's office.
Who was wearing the hammer pants?
You know, there were quite a few hammer pants, actually. There were. There's lots of colors. You know, Rocksmid represented well as well. There were a lot of wigs. Kaythan and I were the '70s girls, so, but yeah, it was a fun time. So I really, I was able to connect with the Heights Schools Foundation and kind of use that as a launchpad for the 100th. And then as the homecoming parade is coming, it's going to be a decades theme as well. So that's going to be, and people are already planning, they're already planning.
Which means we have to worry about transportation, right? Because they're going to be in this for the price.
There's a lot of coronation going on already on the homecoming parade. So, but I want to thank Keith Newman. Thank you for letting us invade your space with all of our crazy and wild ideas and different things. And Kaythan for partnership, Roz and Shayla for just helping, supporting getting things in, Nikki from Kaythan's team as well. So it was like a big team of folks who, you know, do it, but we really want to just like start the year, you know, with fun and positivity, but also kind of talking through a lot of the things we have to be proud of as a district. So if you did not get a chance to see it, it should be posted on our YouTube channel. Please check it out, so you can see how fun it was. Because I know lots of folks were, you know, out of town or unable to attend. But it was a great, great, great event. So as we go into the month of September, we do have, as I mentioned, Heights Homecoming coming up. Monday, September 15th marks the beginning of Hispanic Heritage Month. National IT Professionals Day is on the 16th. We have a boardwork session on the 16th as well, which will be on our academic goals, goals one and two. The Fathers Walk or the Grown-Ups Walk, called Different Things at Different Schools, is going to be on the 18th of September. So different schools are kind of doing different iterations of that. We have National Gear Up Week happening, the 22nd through the 26th. Schools close on the 23rd for Rosh Hashanah, and then a special board meeting on the 23rd as well. So that concludes my report for September 2nd, representing our work that happened in August.
Thank you. Ms. Latham, you're up.
Okay. Good evening.
Good evening.
I am going to talk today.
What's just for the recording?
Okay. I'm going to talk today about the actions of the Ohio House on the 25th of August, particularly the three bills that they proposed in the House. And they're calling it the Taxpayers Freedom Trilogy. So the first act, as they call it, Act One, is discontinuing the continuum. It's House Bill 420. Its aim is to eliminate continuing levies. They propose to do that by disallowing, oh, sorry, hold on. Did something weird.
I think you're still up.
Okay. Just do slideshows, maybe? Is that better?
If you do slideshow. Or not?
Can everybody still see it?
Yes.
Okay. So the way they propose to do that is by disallowing any new continuing levies and by 2030 eliminating property taxes that are levied for a continuing period of time, so making all levies term limited. It includes provisions for school districts to levy taxes for permanent improvements and to consider school district income tax in addition to or in combination with the property tax. The impact of this, if this were to pass, would be much shorter levy cycles, decreased revenue predictability as school districts would have to depend on, you know, a regular levy cycle and being able to pass those levies successfully the first time in order to do any real projections of what that revenue would look like for districts in the future. That can impact negotiations. So any negotiating long-term contracts and that sort of thing, if you have revenue unpredictability, that's much more difficult to do. It would be a catastrophic loss in funding if new levies were not passed. Most of the levies that we have on the ballot, or have had on the ballot or have passed, have been continuing levies. And so to get rid of those by 2030 would cause a significant decrease in our funding. All of those levies are subject to House Bill 920, so they kind of erode over time. And then it would result in higher taxes for residents. That's because when you pass a new levy, it's at the current valuation. So most of us have experienced our valuations continuing to grow, go up. And so that's going to actually do the opposite of what they're proposing and cause the taxes to be waged against the higher valuation instead of eroding with the House Bill 920. Okay, now I think I am in a pickle because I can't advance it. I'm going to try it again.
Act one, still? You can talk about it.
Okay.
I don't know if, we can get the, the presentation posted.
I believe it's already, it's already in.
It's already in. Yes, it is in board docs.
Yeah, so you can just.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
House Bill 421 or Act Two is called arresting inside millage. Its aim is to allow for a new process where voters can initiate a ballot measure to reduce property taxes collected without a specific vote. So inside millage is limited to 10 mills and it's split between school districts and other public service entities. So the city of Cleveland Heights, city of University Heights, the county gets a portion. So it's not just limiting resources to school districts. If this were, the, the proposal is the, the voters would file a petition with the Board of Elections. They would propose a reduction amount and make an argument about why they think that that is sufficient. The petition must be signed by 15% of the total votes cast in the last general election for the Office of Governor in that subdivision. And the impact of that would be loss for, again, not only the district, but cities, libraries, et cetera.
Fire departments.
Yes. And so for the district, we have 4.45 inside mills of the 10 that we share with our other service providers. And that would be a, a reduction in about $7.6 million for us. And then the last of the trilogy is Act Three, House Bill 422. And they are calling it the Triumph of the Taxpayer. Its aim is to increase the voter approval threshold for the passage of property tax levies. Their proposal to do so requires different percentages of approvals by, by aggregate rate. And I have a chart on the slide. But if a levy is not more than one mill, then it requires 50%, which is what is required now, majority. But if it is more than one mill, but, but not more than two mills, it requires 60%. And if it is more than two mills, which most levies are, more than two mills, it would require 66% to, so a super majority essentially is what they have attempted to create with this. The impact of this would be the funds are explicitly restricted and cannot be used for daily operating expenses like salaries. And these things would make it more difficult for districts to pass levies going forward. And so if you think there's too many levies now or you need property tax relief, this is the opposite of anything that they're claiming to do with that here. And so I urge you all to pay attention to what's going on. Pay attention to what they're naming things. It sounds flashy. It sounds good, but not necessarily in effect what is going on.
The State House comes back to work when?
That's a good question. Yeah, but I believe it's October.
So we have.
I think they're back.
They are back today?
Did they get called back in advance? Because the regular session starts in October.
Yeah.
And there was some talk about whether they would get called back. I think it's very important that everybody communicate about these three bills. The names are disingenuous, right?
Yes, for sure. Representative Click is on all three bills. They are cosponsored by different people, but.
But Rep. Click is on, has sponsored.
All three.
Okay.
So can I ask you to pull together, and this is going to be no small feat, I know, but you're a wizard. Can I ask you to pull together numbers? What, what is the, the financial impact of these things if they go through? You know, one of the things that you mentioned in the Act Three is that we are explicitly not allowed to use levies for operating expenses, which is people.
It's 80% of our budget.
And that's 80% of our budget. We are a people business, just as healthcare, just as a lot of industries. So, you know, they're trying to legislate us out of existence. It is interesting to me too that, so I would really like to see scenarios, a CHUH scenario, because that's the information that people need in order to write and call and sign up to give testimony. It, it's really, and Howard Fleeter will do it because he's incredible and of course, a Heights grad. Which surprises no one. A couple of things really struck me that at the, at the very same time, that, that every one of, Act One, Two, and Three, every one of those is intended to decapitate public education and reduce the amount of money flowing into the coffers that educate 90% of Ohio's schoolchildren. You know who's not touched by this? All those people using Ed Choice vouchers. That money's not going down. And yet, everything about this is about money going down to public schools. So this is, this is sort of a moment, Tiger Nation. You know, we thought we had some wins at the end of the last session with a couple of vetoes, but the, the battle is still being waged. I will remind everyone too, that the Constitution of the state of Ohio requires the legislature to create a system that thoroughly and efficiently funds public education. So here they're creating a system that dismantles public education. I have been reaching out through social media to a representative for weeks now, who posts, his name is David Thomas. And he is sort of the, the new pretty boy of, of the far right, the extreme right. And he's talking about eliminating property taxes. That's his thing. And I have been asking him the same question every time he posts, which is simply, how will the legislature make up for the loss in revenue that will be experienced by Ohio's public schools if we lose property taxes? I have posted that question, I am not exaggerating, 25 times over the past few weeks. He has never replied to it.
It's no surprise.
And he does reply.
To other people.
To other people.
Right.
So he has a, he has a constitutional requirement to fund public education. They're defunding public education and he has nothing to say about it.
The Constitution also prohibits public tax money from funding a separate religious education system.
A separate education system.
A separate education system. And we've seen how the legislature has been creating a separate education system and funding it with public tax dollars. So they're doing it, you know, they're, they're, they're breaking the Constitution from both directions.
Yeah.
If break is the right verb.
Violate.
Violating the Constitution from both directions.
This absolutely is a problem dressed up as a solution. There is, you know, the, the Act Two, you know, change, no, sorry, Act Three, changing in these acts. The names of these, you know, excuse me, is, it's dumb. The fact, I mean, this is like, you know, you know, Operation Enduring Freedom or whatever. It's like you give it a fancy, you know, a cutesy name.
Let's call, let's call it what it is. Acts One, Acts Two, Acts Three.
Yeah. And so, so three, you know, this is designed so that a levy will never pass in the state again. You know, it's, this stacks the deck so hard. I mean, if you think back to, you know, Reaganomics in the 1980s, supply side economics, you know, it had an ethos. It had, you know, trickle down. The idea was wrong. But the idea was that you give money to people at the top and it'll filter its way through the economy to people at the bottom. There's no trickle here. This is just drying up the funds that go to public education. And there'll be, you know, if this, if these three things were to go through, there would be a short-term period where every district in the state would be putting levies on the ballot, just, you know, fighting for their lives. And then, you know, 15 years later, every district in the state's going to be in the red because no one is going to be able to achieve this. It's, I mean.
With a 66% super majority. I, I don't think that there's probably been a levy that has passed in Ohio with a 66%. How, how many could there have been in the past decade?
Yeah.
Have there been any?
Yeah.
You know?
I don't think there's been anything on the ballot which has passed at a super majority because it's not actually desirable in a democracy for things to be that stacked in one direction or the other, right? I mean.
For Act Two, when you mentioned the loss in revenue, that is comparing to what timeframe?
Sure. So that is looking at our valuation for 2024, which is paid in 2025. So that's real time, what we would be losing based on the 4.45 mills of inside mills that we have.
You know, and, and I will remind two more things and then I'll shut up. When Governor Strickland left office, Ohio was ranked fourth in the country for quality of K-12 public education, number four in the country. Since then, one party has held control of the governor's mansion and both houses of the legislature. Every single year, we are now ranked in the thirties. So what are we getting for all of this? Nothing. Nothing that we want. It has been an attack on public school teachers. It has been an attack on public school children. What we know is that children, when Governor Strickland left, were receiving better education in the state of Ohio than they are today. That's not an accident. That is intentional. That's by design. And then you look at a district like ours. You know, this is all they say. They tell us that this is all designed because public school districts are throwing good money after, after bad. Yet we are now in the situation where we are in the largest, the longest, pardon me, the longest gap between levy asks in 45 years. The longest gap between levy asks in 45 years. Now, we had some help in there because of COVID money. But when we go to voters again, which we will have to do, I'll be very proud to tell that story as I'm knocking on doors and bragging about the work that our kids are doing and the work that our teachers are doing and the work that we have done on this podium, trying to make every dollar stretch as far as we possibly can. And the cuts that have been made quietly, and there have been cuts that have been made quietly. And so it, it's just, it's so frustrating because so many people work so hard for the next generation. And then we're constantly fighting battles that we don't need to fight. So.
And just a reminder.
Buckle up, Tiger Nation.
The reminder that the reason that that levy was allowed to stretch that long was that it was a permanent levy. Another thing.
Right, being destroyed here by one of these guys.
And a permanent levy with a locked millage. So the millage stays the same. It does not grow with inflation. And so we've, like Dan has said, tightened our belts and made strategic cuts and, you know, been adaptive and been smart year over year with the dollars flowing through this district. And, you know, this, this nightmare of a plan would have wrote all of that.
And just to add a bit of joy to this image, it's not just public education that will suffer. Municipal governments are going to get destroyed. The library systems of Ohio, which are, you know, some of the best in the nation, will be destroyed. The ability to ask voters to subsidize the things that make society work is going to be destroyed and the things that make society work won't be funded.
Police, fire?
Yeah, everything. So.
Aving roads?
No, we don't have any potholes. So, okay. Well, thank you, Angel. That was depressing.
No, but, but also, Angel, I think this is a wonderful explanation and you're distilling some very complex stuff into three easy to digest slides that I think are us and other people in the community to have these conversations. You know, I, I hope you're, I hope the hair on your predecessor's neck is standing on end right now as you deliver this because this is great.
Yeah. By the way, I mentioned Howard Fleeter, whose organization is called O E P I. If anybody in the audience is interested, it's Ohio Education Policy Institute.
Did it.
You got it right. That's amazing.
All right. Now it's my turn. I don't actually have a report because I've been significantly absent the past three weeks. But I want to thank Gabe for taking over in my absence and everybody else for doing what we do. I'm sad I missed some really fantastic events. They are usually, you know, things that get me going for the new school year with incredible verve. But I think it's important to remember that nothing in our system depends on any one individual. We are all working together towards the same common goal and so we can replace each other relatively easily. So that's all I have to say. Is there any news from committees?
So I will just say on behalf of Heights Athletic Boosters, the 2025 Fall Sports Calendars are available. So pick one up if you haven't already. I will also say that Tiger Nation tailgates are back. And so for a $10 fee, you can reserve a parking spot, bring your own food, but have guaranteed parking before the football game. If you're interested in all four home games, which is, well, all three right now, September 12th, 26th, and October 17th. Those are the remaining tailgate sessions that are available. They will take place in the parking lot near the baseball softball fields from 4:45 PM until 6:45 PM. When the lot will, when the lot will open for other fans, your car will remain parked in the lot throughout the game. Except for homecoming tailgate on Friday, September 12th. There will be no food or drink for sale, but there will be plenty of Tiger spirit. That's all I have.
Thank you. Dan, do you have anything from the foundation?
Yeah, the Heights Schools Foundation, which is our alumni association, continues to plan the Party of the Century, which is being known as Heights 100. It is the celebration of 100 years of Heights High at the corner of Cedar and Lee. It will be held over the weekend of June 20. It will be held over the weekend of June 2026, 6/20/26. There will be multiple events, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. Most of them sort of hung around a pretty big gala event on Saturday night. And it is really shaping up to be something remarkable. Had a chance, Liz mentioned a few minutes ago that we brought back the Golden Tiger Breakfast last weekend, was it, Liz? And it was fantastic. So Golden Tigers are Tigers who graduated 50 years ago or more. And we had probably, I would say, 30 folks at Heights High, which was fantastic. They were very enthusiastic. They really love hearing about what's happening in the building today. They love seeing that auditorium, and it was, it was a lot of fun. Speaking of a Golden Tiger, we have learned that the Homecoming Parade will be led by a twice-Golden Tiger. Well, I suppose not, but anyway, Dr. Howard Tucker. Wait, Dr. Howard Tucker will be at the front of the parade. He is a member of the Distinguished Alumni Hall of Fame. He is 102 years old. And he, until recently, was the oldest practicing physician
Oh, right.
in the United States. And he's in such great shape, I'd make an appointment with him today. So that'll, that's something to really look forward to. We also mentioned, what else? No, I think that's about it. So 6/20/26, mark your calendars, save the date. And Homecoming is the twen...
The 12th?
It's the 12th.
Yes, Homecoming is the 12th.
Friday, the 12th, soon.
Mr. Brown will be celebrating his 40th high school reunion. I don't know what that's like. And I'll be officially off duty this, that weekend.
Okay.
Can I also add, one thing I failed to mention is that for district staff, there is a price reduction, so just $5 per game. So we really want our teachers and staff members to participate in our tailgating as well.
And Sean, we're still hiring, right? We still have a couple of spots to save a little, save a little money on that parking spot. Come drive a bus for us.
We have a lot of staff who are alums, a lot of staff who live in the district. It's, they're great members of, Tiger Nation is strong.
Anything else?
Can you send the tailgate info so we can put in the weekly staff bulletin, too, as well? Just so we can...
That's great.
No, my committee is the Health and Wellness Committee, and the Recruitment and Retention Committee will be meeting soon. They haven't resumed yet because of the beginning of the school year.
Anything from you, Phil?
Same thing, Safety Committee, I think, is just getting, getting started again for this year. The PTAs are always accepting new members. So if you're a district parent, find your local PTA. And Reaching Heights just started their new fiscal year this month and are getting ready for another great school year.
Thank you. Any new business?
Happy Labor Day to all of our bargaining units.
Amen.
Yes. Well, it's old business now, but any unfinished business? Correspondence announcements? Nothing outstanding, then I would like a motion to adjourn, please.
On motion, we adjourn.
All right, second, Ms. Latham.
Mr. Trumbo?
Yes.
Ms. Serini?
Yes.
Mr. Heinz?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mrs. Crenshaw?
Yes.
Thank you, good night.